All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Lake Bluff School District 65 Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, May 10th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7 o'clock PM. Carrie, may I have a roll call vote, please? A roll call, please.
Andy Duran.
Present.
Anne Hill.
Present.
Mark Berry.
Carrie Steinbach.
Present.
Tim Pennage.
Present.
Amy Connell Downe Hugh.
Present.
And Lauren Hirsch.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum and all board members are present, so we can begin. I'd ask that you please stand me and join in the Fledge of Allegiance. We'll now move into the public comment section of our agenda. And before we get started, I want to note that all Board of Education meetings for District 65 are open to the public, and the Board welcomes public attendance and participation at these meetings. At every Board of Education meeting, we offer two options for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one towards the end. We welcome comments from our staff, parents, and constituents. In line with Board Policy 2.230, we respectfully request that all comments be kept to a three-minute time limit. I would also like to remind the audience that this public comment period is a time for members of the public to express their views, and it is not intended to be a conversation. The Board will listen, but should not be expected to respond or to engage in dialogue. And I ask, when you begin your comments, to please identify yourself by stating your full name for the record. I have three people that I'll just call in no particular order who already expressed interest, but if you have not completed one of these forums, you still can comment as well. So I'll call Jan Ramito to join us first.
But anyhow, I'm Jan Ramito. I live at 353 Vincent Court, across the street from the open space. My husband and I have been here for a little over 40 years now. I can't believe I've been with him 40 years. But we've seen changes come and go. That's the issue of coming, of living across the street. We bought our house across the street from a school with our eyes wide open. Things look different than I knew was across the street, but I love, like, bluff. I love my house. I love my neighbors. And bottom line, I love the schools. And having worked in the schools, I know from inside what a gem we have. And it, it takes everything to create that. And I'm so excited. My grandchildren are going to go here. I know I have to go fast. Because I know that it's a great education and that you are looking out for kids. At this point in time, I see the need for the sports court. I think, and I don't want to speak for my neighbors, but I think we wish we had been brought into the process sooner because we feel like we are needing to react to it instead of be a part of it. And I think that was probably the biggest issue. That I used to have school buses parked across the street from my front door when we first moved in. Right now, it's a big improvement. I don't mind the sound of kids across the street from me because it's usually during the day. I know that living across the street from the school, I've got to put up with extra traffic on graduation day, the play at 3:30 in the afternoon when everybody gets out. And I understand that. That's a part of it. I can deal with that. I, I think our bottom line was, we wish we had brought in, been brought into the process a little bit sooner in the process, especially after attending the Zoom this afternoon and realizing we've been talking about it since January. Just a heads up, like, hey, neighbors, we're going to be doing that. We're looking at this. Do you guys want to be in on the conversation? And then you would have heard from us sooner. I, after going through a wedding on the open space, the chiller noise, I know that the district has responded and put in money to do that. And I am confident that, should there be a need for landscaping, hardscaping, et cetera, once this is in, because you don't know what it's going to be like until people start using it, that you guys will respond and kind to anything. So I know I'm out of time, but thanks.
Thank you, Jan. Appreciate your time here as a teacher and for your comments. Next up, we have Christine Klowter. I apologize if I said that incorrectly. Klowter, thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris. I live at 130 East Sheridan Place. My husband and I have raised a family here. We've lived here for 37 years. And just like Jan, I would like to say that I think that one of the issues that we are kind of upset about is that we have not really been included in the process of evaluating what was going to be done, having some input, especially since we know that this idea, which we understand is in the beginning stages, was presented back in January. We heard about this back in late April, and I had to do some emailing to find out more about it. I think at this point, we do understand that the children should be on the green space. It makes sense. I think that we probably will have a support court, which I don't really object to, but what I have concerns about is the 24/7 access that has been proposed and the additional noise and security that that could bring with people using it for basketball, with multiple basketballs, since there will be three to five hoops, and the out-of-school usage and what that will bring. I think that that's a valid concern, and I really would like to know how the village and the school plans to address that. I don't think that the onus should be on the citizens to have to call the school, call the district, ask that something be addressed, or in turn, call the village or the police. I would like to see some sort of a process put in place so that we know that these issues can be dealt with proactively.
Thank you. Next up, we have Frank Swanton.
My name's Frank Swanton. I live at 363 Vincent Court. Like my neighbors, I've lived there for 50 years, over 50 years. This afternoon, I was browsing the PTO website, and I noticed that three of the school board members are also district officers of the PTA Board. Amy is the new family coordinator. Lauren is a teacher-staff appreciation chair. And Anne Hill is the sixth grade social chair. I believe on any issues before the school board presented by the PTO, that three PTO officers should reclusive themselves from any involvement. Their involvement in discussions or voting would constitute a conflict of interest. Any vote would be, certainly be challenged. Therefore, on tonight's agenda, the three PTO officers should reclusive themselves from the discussion and any vote taken on the matters. Any resignations by these people to conform with this would be, should be in writing and made public. Secondly, I would like the President to change the order of the meeting and take number 7A next. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swanton. Okay. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to address the board and make comment? Anybody on Zoom with a, if you're on Zoom and watching and would like to make a comment, you can indicate so by raising your hand or by expressing it in the chat or the Q and A. Amy, is there anybody?
No, but we do have some public comment via our forums. Shall I read those now?
Yeah, you want to go first?
Okay. This is from Adrienne Mural. "I'm writing in support of the proposed sports court project at LBMS. It will enhance the mental, physical, and social well-being of our students and community as a whole. The PTO administration has taken much into consideration, and my family is excited about the addition." We have Judas Sharp. "Although my daughter is now in seventh grade at LBMS, I think it is a great idea to bring courts and outdoor sports to children as early as possible in order for them to experience a broad range of sports and activities at an early age, hopefully creating an opportunity to build a lifelong love of a sport that they truly enjoy."
Can you, this is not your time to talk, Ms. Swanton. Thank you. We don't ask for the addresses always in the public, in the written comment form. I did not ask you for yours. You happened to give it, and I appreciate that. Would you continue, Mrs. Totten?
We have Kristen Lacy. "I sincerely hope you will accept the generous gift of the PTO. I have had two children grow through the middle school, and a third will be there in a few years. For my older two, the lack of sports facilities for organized and recreation sports was a definite drawback. This idea has been raised many times, and it seems like the time has come since the project will be funded by the PTO. What a fabulous use of PTO resources." We have Caitlin Moore. "As a mother of three kids presently in Lake Bluff schools, I was very pleased to learn of the opportunity the PTO was presented with and helping fund a sport court at LBMS. I think the addition will provide another outdoor outlet and activity center for our students and teachers to utilize, especially when we have decent weather. I also applaud the time, commitment, and conversation that has gone into the opportunity from the many community volunteers involved, as well as our outstanding school and district staff members. I don't understand any opposition to the project after the past few years our community and especially our children have endured. Creating another safe space to play and gather seems like both a logical and fun plan." And I have two more.
Do these need to be read?
Yes, you want to go ahead?
I'll go next. Lindsay Bornholdt. "We live right around the corner from the junior high and would love to have a sports court. It would be a great addition to the neighborhood and is necessary for the middle school students." Emma Grace. "As a student at LBMS, I am so excited about the idea of new sports courts being added. I would also like to thank the PTO for all of their hard work." Ray Dobash. "I support the building of the proposed sport court at LBMS." Chris and Claudia Bennett. "It is important to encourage and provide the appropriate environment for kids to exercise and decompress during recess and PE. We support the PTO's effort to help build a dedicated outdoor sport court on the LBMS school property." Stephanie Rickmeyer. "I wanted to write in support for the new sports court at the Lake Bluff Middle School. As a parent of an elementary school student and a middle school student, I'm excited for the courts to move, sorry, to provide them with the opportunity to play and engage in sport at school and in gym class in a safe and fun way, which is not possible with the current parking lot facilities. A well-maintained sport court would be a major improvement for the school, its students, and our community." And Kristy Dunneck. "I am in support of a sport court at LBMS. I think the students need a safe outdoor space for physical activity breaks. The Gaga pit and old hoops in the parking lot are not adequate for outdoor options for 300 middle schoolers."
I do have two more. Peter McLamrick is, I'm in sixth grade at LBMS. I'm excited for the new sport court because, first of all, it'll be better than playing on an old gravel parking lot. There won't be cars parked in the middle of where we play football. It gives us more games to play. Now we'll definitely have enough basketball hoops where we can all play. Normally, we can't play without getting in the way of something. I have a suggestion for the half courts. Give them two hoops so we can play an actual pickup game. Thank you. And actually, two more. I have Cynthia McLamrick. "I want to thank the PTO so much for their work toward bringing the sports court to LBMS. It's sorely needed as they are currently dodging parked cars during basketball games. It will be wonderful to have a dedicated location for the students to run around, interact with friends, and get some fresh air. They may be in middle school, but they're still kids and need to play. Thanks again to the PTO for recognizing this need in our community." And I have one more. Lauren Armstrong. "I'm very supportive of our community being able to offer facilities for outdoor activities that are common to our adjacent communities. Thank you to Nicole for all your hard work and dedication on this project. Let's get these kids outside and off their phones."
Okay. Is that everybody that's submitted a written comment?
Just double check. Yes.
And anybody else in the room who's not already submitted a comment or spoken, like to address the board at this time? Okay, great. We will have another opportunity at the beginning of the meeting. We will move on to, excuse me, Section 5, our reports. And we'll start with Dr. Lisa Lealley with the superintendent's report.
My report tonight is fairly brief. Eighth grade promotion is coming up, and we are excited to have our students be promoted to the high schools. We do invite board members to help us deliver or distribute diplomas. We need at least two. We're planning on accommodating as many as would like to participate, but if you would like to help us with diplomas, please let Amy know, and we will get you on the program. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Great. I have a pretty quick president's report, too. Really simply centered on expressing gratitude today. First, gratitude for our teachers. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and while we appreciate our teachers every day, last week provided an opportunity for everyone in our system to celebrate them in a special way. So as such, I'd like to read the proclamation that was handed out to all teachers and staff during Teacher Appreciation Week. And it reads like this. "Whereas educators mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas educators encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas educators spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its educators in educating and making a difference in the lives of the children of the Lake Bluff community. Now therefore be it resolved that May 2nd through 6th, 2022, be proclaimed Teacher Appreciation Week, a time to recognize and thank our educators who illuminate our vision. Excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day." So thank you to our teachers. Next, I'd like to express gratitude for our admin team. Our administrative team is small but mighty. They each wear many hats. Grateful for the way they approach their important jobs and for their dedication to our kids in this community. I'm grateful to our PTO for the work they do every day on behalf of our schools and our students and our families. I'm grateful for the work being done in collaboration with Lake Forest School District 67 on 115 at both the board and administrative levels, especially around articulation opportunities with the high school, addressing legislative priorities, and participation in the recent portion of the graduate process that we'll hear more about coming up. I'm grateful for my fellow board members and for their volunteer dedication to help all students thrive. And on that note, I'll end by saying that I'm grateful for the Thrive Committee and for Dr. Lealley's leadership in facilitating difficult conversations here in Lake Bluff for the benefit of every student every day. A lot of great things happening here at District 65, and I look forward to the many great things that are ahead. That concludes my president's report. Go on to Item 6, which is addition of discussion items. This is the opportunity for board members to suggest a discussion item for future agendas. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add tonight? Okay. Great. Well, then we'll move on to our discussion and presentation period and like to first invite Nicole Elliott from our PTO to provide us an update on the sport court.
Okay, so this is going to be redundant for some, but you know, there's a lot of information regarding this, and it's great to hear the public comments. And we are doing our best in learning along the way. This idea was thought to be more simplistic than it actually is turning into. And so there's a lot of steps, both known and unknown, as we go through this process, but I think we can hopefully get to an endpoint that everybody is comfortable with to benefit the children as well as our community. So if you want to go ahead and progress. So again, we were blessed in this community. And when I came into the president's role, I became familiar with the financials. And over the years, our bank account, quite frankly, has, you know, accumulated through the generous donations. And, that's okay. And so we were, we said, okay, we want to do something significant that's really going to make an impact within our district. And so that is the point in which we met with the administrators and our teachers. We sought input from all teachers, even asked the kids, you know, what's going to help you? What are we missing? What can we help with? So the list that they came up with at the, at the middle school was the idea of a sports court, outdoor recreation space, a dedicated space. These video screens that will be used for announcements, they have multi-use. They're also used in the musical. Those have been funded, updated steam computers. We did that once as a PTO. We'll look for future funding opportunities for those. Pottery wheel, there's one, could use another one. LBS identified the courtyard improvements. There's a great courtyard in the center of the elementary school, but it's not used as it could be. And so what are some ideas for educational opportunities to get the kids outside? Nature, understanding natural vegetation, what kind of bees and birds and everything could come into the area? And it sounds like there's a lot of ideas going on there, and Kristy Dunneck is leading this great project there. And also, they are in need of some new hoops and backboards. So can we partner that with the opportunity for the outdoor space at the middle school? There was a great author event that's already been funded. There's Makerspace team items, and there's a variety of other things that we do on an ongoing basis throughout the year that will continue, that is planned, that is planned as we look at our spend. We're reserving two years of spend of routine items, and the remaining can be dedicated to these projects. So in the end, the PTO and those who contribute in those conversations really decided that we want to put our efforts around trying to pursue a sport court option and the courtyard improvements for the elementary school as our main projects for this and next year. So out of that, given that the focus is the sport court for right now, it's the whys. And we've gone over a lot of these, and I think that is well-understood. It's not ideal that the kids are playing in the parking lot where there are cars entering the area. It's uneven. It's not shock-absorbing. It gets hot. They run into the cars, you know, they dent cars, the balls go under cars. Not good. Pretty much common sense. There's also a lot of maintenance vehicles going in and out, and why they try to limit the going in and out, why the kids are in session, and there's sometimes needs to go despite the kids being out in that lot. Also, there's unannounced vehicles. So any visitor coming to the school is going into that lot before entering the school entrance. And so we don't know always who's coming in and out, and they could be coming at a time when children are out. Because of this, you know, it's not really adequate space. You would be, you would kind of expect there to always be some type of dedicated recreation space at a middle school. We have the Gaga pit. It's not used a ton right now, and the two 20-year-old hoops. Our prior school definitely had dedicated outdoor playground space and equipment. That, the latest picture was 2010. We only have one gym, so this could augment PE activities. And because of lack of adequate resources, kids are defaulting to sometimes even more screen time after lunch. It's no secret, there's almost daily communications about, you know, the fact that screens and kind of the situation and then almost addiction of screens is leading to a situation where it's not super healthy. So to provide activities that will get kids off of screens, get outside, promote socialization, teamwork, cooperation, in a more organized manner with multiple resources, I think can only benefit the students. And this is a current view of the hoops. Kind of to the right, there's also some four-square that occasionally gets played as well. And this is an overview. The current play area is on the west side in the parking lot, and then the Gaga pit that we currently have is on the east side. And we wanted to provide the perspective, because this is how it looked as recent as 2010. And even then, there was dedicated play space on that east side. And also, just to note, you know, in neighboring schools, many of, all of which are in our district, but we compete against. Oak Grove is in a neighborhood. Highland is actually in a neighborhood, and their middle schools that all have dedicated outdoor recreation spaces. Deer Path has multiple courts. Some have playgrounds as well as outdoor, you know, basketball, four-square, et cetera. So when we decided that we did want to focus, a lot of it was just gaining initial information. You know, what do we need to do? Who do we need to talk to? What vendors are out there? What should actually be present in the opportunity that's provided? And so that was slow. While it says January to March, it was a conversation here and there throughout the time. It wasn't a constant effort. Really, the activities really began once the vendors came in very early March to say, okay, like, this is potentially what it can be. Here's some ideas for two locations. And then they came back to us at the end of March with proposals in terms of cost, their suggested sizes, layouts, options for activities. So then with that information, we were given an initial costing. Then came, you know, whoa, it's a little bit more than what we might think. And at that point, it was also made aware to us that we also have to get the engineering firm involved from a grading perspective, soil sample evaluation, the village will need. So this is a bigger project, and it's going to take a little bit more time and cost a little bit more money. So this is when we were beginning to plan the spring social. And anybody in fundraising knows, when you have a specific goal in mind, it's easier to raise funds. So it made sense to us to tie it towards this so that there's money for both the sport court and the courtyard improvements as we look for 2022 and '23. At that point, information had gotten out, so we felt it necessary to let the neighbors know that yes, we're thinking about it. We have some activities beginning to date. And then now, here we are on May 10th. And so the initial idea is that this will be funded by the PTO. That is the goal. That is the plan, and we have it in the budget. It will be a court and a half to two courts. It has to have considerations that fit within the village permitting requirements for open space, and a lot of things need to be considered, but the size of a court and a half seems to be what we'll go with. It is going to be green to blend with the grass. We want to limit hardscape and things that are not appealing, but are going to be very open to feedback and understanding if, you know, there's certain landscaping, like, what can we do to make it beautiful and functional and a space that, you know, everybody can kind of benefit from. The approximate dimensions are going to be anywhere from 6,500 to 8,000 square feet, which is less than 10% of the green space in the east lot if it's on the east. If it's on the west, that area will be mostly the sport court behind the service garage. And we'll talk about locations in a couple minutes here. There's no plans, no desire for permanent lights or speakers. Again, three to five basketball hoops. We want to incorporate different activities within the court. So four-square pickleball, badminton, basketball. Heck, people during PE could put out some portable nets and play for hockey. It can be used to go sit and read a book on a nice day. There can be multiple uses for this thing. There's no, again, permanent pickleball nets. I agree that pickleball is noisy. And actually, the court substance itself, the best use of the ball is actually a firm, like, foam ball. So that would likely be what's used on this because there's actually little squares that to help permeate water. And so it could be a quieter version of that if those are used. So we want to be reasonable about this. It must be accessible and ADA compliant. And we are definitely planning on having a camera installed to monitor the court usage and to provide supervision and capability for recording during non-school hours. This is an initial rendering. Nothing is finalized. Nothing has been signed. But it's the idea to represent that we can choose colors that, again, blend. It can have the activities to support different, you know, desires for recreation outside and still fit. It's also designed to mimic the lines of the building so that it looks proportionate and also scaled to what currently exists right up next to the building on the east side, if that is a chosen location. But it also, the size fits on the west side as well. As I spoke of briefly, it's a concrete surface with a plastic overlay. This provides better shock absorption. It also helps prevent against concussions, abrasions, things like that that will really benefit from a safety and play aspect as well. I don't really need to say too much more about that. Okay, so the location options. We've got the east and we've got the west. The west has the opportunity to maybe have noise away from more neighbors. It has underground drainage that exists when the renovation of the school occurred. So there might be some situations of grading, and we have to dig. It's also a wetter location, and so additional drainage would need to be installed. It's also a wetter location and so additional drainage would need to be installed in that location. It also presents a little bit of a challenge because the gray area of that overhead view is the gym and that students, well, I guess the, yeah, that's the gym. And students will need to walk through the classroom areas to access that location if we were to put it there. So it could be disruptive to academics as well. The maintenance shed isn't going to move and so that's still relatively close there. And on that location too, there's not a lot of other room for other activities. The east location, it does support the opportunity for additional locations. There's some grading, but the engineer's preliminary thoughts is that it would not require drainage to the extent or even necessary, it can be graded and that would provide adequate flow because there's enough land from a water perspective. There's also the ability to put supervision on the east and be able to now use a Gaga pit. And it seems that it would fit well with, you know, the expected use of a school and land to have an outdoor recreation space. And if it were to be in that location, like I mentioned, this was a rendering provided by one of the vendors and just to indicate that it was designed in that size to be symmetrical with the building that exists. So there, you know, we're talking, we're having this discussion today to gain, you know, potentially initial support and consensus to move forward. If that is a yes, there's the formality of things that would begin in terms of needing to go through the village processes, which there are quite a few. So we need to go to the village zoning board and architectural review board. The engineering firm has gone through these processes with Lake left before and can assist in that process and answering the technical questions as well. And they would be the true experts from grading drainage and all of that. If that goes through in those steps, then there's consideration by the village board. And then if yes improved, then it seeks construction permits. That then goes to the construction and grading of a village permit issuance, which then needs to go to the regional office of education for an ROE permit. So get a long ways to go. And then we can come back and we can say, okay, we've got all this in place. Can we now please receive official approval before any types of activities could begin? So, you know, this is an initial step to just seek consensus and decide what those next steps will be. Thank you.
Thanks Nicole. Before we get into any discussion about this, first of all, thank you for presenting this and for your your work on this. And thanks for bringing our attention at the January meeting. So you heard earlier today that the board has known about this since January. It was actually brought to our attention briefly at the January meeting during the PTO report. When the big proposed changes were presented for the LBEs playground. So I just want to make sure that was clarified. And then that was on a formal presentation. Really glad to see a formal presentation of these projects, you know, taking shape for the first time today. Also, you mentioned tonight is is not about voting for anything. We're not voting on this. There's a long way to go. Obviously, it's just something an opportunity for us to discuss and gain support and consensus to move forward. But before we do that, I'm curious. We heard earlier that board members, three of our board members were officers for the PTO. I actually I'm going to challenge that because I don't think that's the case. So there may be some confusion between PTO officers and PTO reps and wondering if we can discuss that.
Yeah, so I can speak to that as well if you would like Nicole. Amy, Lauren and I have all. Do you still do that position?
I don't.
Okay, so Amy is not on the position anymore at all. I did run the sixth grade ice cream social this year, so I handed out popsicles. The second week of school to the sixth grade kids. That is not a voting position. It is not an officer position. And it is the only involvement that I had with the PTO until recently where I am now part of the eighth grade graduation committee. Both of these things are something that I do because I have a sixth grade student and I have an eighth grade student. Again, neither of them are voting positions. I do not attend PTO meetings and I don't have any intimate knowledge prior to what is being proposed here as well. I am however intimately aware of the PTO bylaws as I am the one who updated them in twenty nineteen. So I am very familiar with what are officer positions, what are voting positions and what are not. And I do not have a voting position. Amy, it sounds like you no longer are involved.
Serve on the PTO, but in my bio online have in the past. So that's the confusion.
And I do know that Lauren's position is also not a voting position nor an officer position.
Teacher appreciation.
So I will say, I can't speak for you, but I will say I will not be recusing myself from this process.
Same, same with me as I'm not an officer on the PTO and according to bylaws, that's, I'm just a representative.
Glad we got that clarified. That was my understanding as well. So it's important that we stay on the facts when we're discussing these things. So with that, I will turn it over to just an open discussion about the playground, the sports court idea, I mean, at the middle school, what Nicole just presented. Any thoughts and comments on that?
Couple of questions. I was wondering if you could put up the picture of the old east school that showed the 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 former. I'm curious about like comparing the the new projected location and the approximate size to the picture of the old east school that showed how much space they had occupied. And my quick glance at that shows that granted, all that is now green space, but they had way more space for kids to play outside back then than we're even proposing for the size of this current sports court. So just to give people can frame a reference, this is not anything anywhere near as much as they had in the old days. And you still have, I think you said it's only eight percent of the total green space, less than ten percent of the total green space will still be preserved. Yep. And then I also did a little nerdy calculation. A professional basketball court is fifty by ninety-four and it's like forty-seven hundred square feet just for people have a frame of reference. Well, like if you can't picture in your mind how big it'll be, a regular basketball court is fifty by ninety-four. It's about forty-seven hundred square feet. So if if the plans are relatively consistent, you're talking about something that's about one and a half times the size of a regular basketball.
The initial rendering that they had was exactly six thousand four hundred and eighty square feet and that was a court and a half, but a middle sized court. So that's not a professional sized court. A middle regulation court is smaller. So it'd be a middle sized court plus a half.
I'm just saying this, I did look up the professional court is is forty-seven hundred square feet. You compare that to so what you see on TV compared to that's about one and a half times the the Bulls game.
Exactly.
So I just thought it was, you've got ninety percent of the green space preserved and still have less room play place areas for kids that participate in activities outside than we did ten years ago. So just want to make that clear.
Thanks Mark. I do have a couple of questions and Nicole, feel free to answer them or Nate, this may be your arena. There were some concerns expressed about monitoring this at night. Is it twenty-four hour access, that type of thing? And I know the green space there exists already and people in the neighborhood use that and whatnot. So how is the exterior of the middle school policed at night or already?
Well, I'll start with the term policing because we had Officer Vincent on our call earlier today. I was surprised to find just how often, in fact, patrols do go by our school. He mentioned specifically that east location is being one that's preferable from a police standpoint simply because of its visibility. And Dr. Li Ali, I don't quite remember, but I thought it was.
Thirty to forty drive by.
I thought that's what he said, thirty to forty drive bys in a given day. So and I do know that if a door is accidentally left open, we haven't had this happen in a very long time, I should be clear. We do get a note and a call from the Lake bluff police who also get out of their cars and walk the perimeter of the building, check the doors, check the windows, make sure everything's locked up tight. So we appreciate that. As far as supervision in the exterior of the building, we do have surveillance cameras on the entryways and some on the exterior of the building. We don't have any in that back lot at the moment. So that's, that's one of the ways in which we can review anything that might have happened there. Footage from those is recorded on a hard drive, which we can get into and back up and take a look at. They are motion activated cameras so that we can record it when there's activity in the area. Does that answer the question?
Can I speed you back on that real quick? Have you had any issues with the Gaga pit being out there outside of school hours?
No, and I should be clear, that was also a donated item too. We were fortunate enough to be given that a few years ago. We have not had any issues at the Gaga pit that I'm aware of.
One more middle school question. Yeah, well, I got that into a little time ago. Still don't understand it. Do we think that we'll have a definite, like a sign somewhere posted so the city is closed as of dawn to dusk or?
We've talked about dawn to dusk and on the call today Sergeant Vincent said that that is all they need to start shooing people out of the area once the sun starts to set and they would know that that's, you know, that's their cue to start.
Give them some some parameters. This is what we need enforced and they can enforce it.
Other thoughts, discussion, questions?
The timeline. So let's, like, is there a ballpark of when these processes can be completed? Because I know they only have certain zoning meetings.
Right, there, they, Drew said that they meet, I believe, every other week from one of the board's perspectives. I don't have all the village approvals. That's going to take longer time than the actual, once we contract to build. We were made aware from the vendors that fortunately they are not experienced experiencing supply chain issues. And so if we could get through the approvals in the summer, it could be late summer, early fall.
And then how long does it take to build something?
And they said they would only be out there roughly a week and a half. Now, that is for the actual laying of the concrete and the plastic on top and then whatever landscaping we do is not included in that. But that's excavation, concrete and plastic.
And during that time, if they were building the court, would it be possible for the construction vehicles or whatever they use to use, should we do this east location? Could they use the middle school parking lot so as not to be in the street and in front of other houses and things?
Yeah, I would see no reason we couldn't accommodate that for sure.
Do we, do we know anything about maintenance, ongoing maintenance for such a court?
So the expected duration of the actual concrete is fifteen to twenty years, more so twenty is what he said in this climate is what he sees. And the plastic itself is also a twenty year court. And for snow removal, it would require, and we've already talked to the administration, it would require a snow blower and not a vehicle like not a snow plow to maintain.
And one one other question, just it's more of a softball. So as a school board softball question, will any taxpayer money be spent on the construction of or design and construction of this court?
That I, at this point, no. The the question is, and that would determine location and why we're looking at two locations is we're going to do a soil test. And I was made aware that that east lot due to excavation had some some concerns a while back that there might be something within that soil. So if there's a soil contamination issue that would need to be brought forward again and say, okay, here's what this is, here's the cost to mitigate. How does that?
And that's the the preferred side, the east side?
And so that's something that is an unknown until we do the soil sample.
There was a lot of debris that was buried there. I know when east school came down, it's, does it still pop up to this well?
We really haven't had any issues with that.
It did for a while, for a number of years. There was stuff kind of rising to the surface.
Maybe it's, maybe it's gone. Any other questions, comments?
I have a quick question about the surface itself. So it's, and this is kind of in the lead, so I apologize. Is there any possibilities to have like a permeable instead of concrete to have
So.
A more, a surface that would allow drainage through the court?
So the permeable, the top is permeable, which then drains. The concrete itself is obviously not permeable, but this is how they build them and how they have found that this works. So it's actually graded at a one inch pitch gradually, as I believe what they said in terms of, I know you have better technical knowledge than me, but they know to pitch it so that there's water runoff, but not enough to make it, you know, that the balls are constantly like flying away. So, and that's the reason that the engineers are also would collaborate with the vendor to determine all the engineering requirements for drainage, for sloping and excavation needs.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so our job tonight was to get consensus and and support for the PTO moving forward through the process. I'm hearing that that seems like the case, but just want to throw that out there. Maybe just quickly. I'm, I'd be more comfortable just quickly ran down to say if you support the PTO and continuing forward. I know for sure I can say I am for a variety of reasons.
I'm in favor of this continuing as well and I I like the idea. I'd like to see where we get with it.
I too agree. I'm fully in support of continuing and thank Nicole for all the extra time and effort you've put into all of this. We appreciate it.
I have no issues. I feel it's a compatible use to the school. It, it seems like it, I I should say, I understand that the neighbors felt caught caught off guard by that. I know that's frustrating. I I don't believe anyone was trying to pull anything over, but I I understand that and I know the administration does a good job of keeping you informed and I hope they continue to do that moving forward. So I have no issues with with you moving forward and thank the PTO for for supporting the students this way.
Agreed. I'm all for it. I think the physical activity is huge, especially during lunch. And I think kids have gotten used to playing on their phone and I think we need to do anything to make that not happen. And thank you for all the work because clearly you've done a lot of work.
Decided to do.
Thank you. I bet, thank you for heading this project. I bet you didn't expect to get the the challenge that you have faced in doing so. So we appreciate that. I very much support the idea. I think it's something that's desperately lacking in our community. I would, I I echo Tim's sentiments. I I hope that we can try to loop in the community whenever possible. And I know that our administrators, administrators in the PTO who make every effort to communicate everything it can to the community, the neighborhood and to inform people what's going on. So I I do support the project.
I too support the project, so I hope it can get through all the red tape and we see something really cool next year.
So there's your consensus, Nicole.
I just want to seek clarification on that. So as that consensus is now gained, I'm assuming my next step is then to work forward to get the soil samples from both locations and come and assess that as step one. And I think we would like to get greater input as to what landscaping desires are wanted. And so any suggestions on how to gain input for that are welcome. That would again apply to both locations so we can and get that aspect going a little bit more concretely as well.
Sounds good. I would suggest, I would suggest coming back to the board periodically and doing just what you did and give us an update on what you found, what you learned, what the next step is, that kind of stuff. So it's a good idea to make it part of the public record.
And Nicole, we'll keep talking about community input and how we can provide those opportunities.
Sounds great. Thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And by the way, thank you to Nate too for working hard on this as well. He's been in there pitching with this idea too.
All right, moving on to one that should be more brief, calendar update.
Yeah, this is a brief update and I'll bring you an amended calendar to take a look at at our next May meeting. As you know, we sent a survey as a joint tri district sixty-six or sixty-five, sixty-seven and one fifteen. It was initiated by the Lake Forest districts, but we had been talking about some staffing issues that we were running into with our spring breaks being off of the rest of Lake County essentially. So this year we, there were a pretty good split of districts, kind of on the two different spring breaks. But looking forward to next year, we actually are probably three of the only districts in Lake County on the spring break that we had proposed. And so for us, while that's really for families who only have children in our three districts, not a huge issue. But for our staff who have children in other districts, for childcare issues, we also have parents who teach in other districts and then wind up being off with their families as well. We decided it would be a good idea to survey the community. You saw the results of that survey overwhelmingly. Staff elected to ask for it to be moved ahead or had one week to the last week in March. And we did have some parents express that that was frustrating. Obviously, some people have already thought about vacations and things for next year. We don't want to inconvenience anyone, but we also want to make sure we have staff to cover our classes. So we are reconvening our own calendar committee. Now that the results of the survey have come in, we'll be looking at the adjusted spring break and then with our own union calendar committee, taking a look at the rest of our days. And then with our own union calendar committee, taking a look at the rest of our days, institute days and early release, just to make sure we're all comfortable with that proposed calendar. We'll bring it back to you in May for approval.
Any questions, comments? Thanks for going through all the work to do that. Keep it with you for Portrait of Graduate.
Yep. Happy to report that we have finished our four meetings and we have board members participate in every meeting. I have to say, not just our board members, but our district 65 community came out for this process and I'm so incredibly proud to see the representation that we had from parents, community members, students, admin and staff. I mean, we really were well represented. What was presented at the final meeting was a draft of the visual of the portrait of a graduate and the words that went around it, some of the, the verbiage around it. And we asked the group for some feedback. I don't know if you remember, but early in the process, we had to cancel one of our meetings because the presenter could not get into town. And it was a weather related emergency. So we wound up compressing our process. Those last three meetings only had like one or two weeks in between. And so what happened was the design team and the admin teams didn't have enough really time to bring the proposed visual. And as polished a format as we wanted to gather the feedback that we needed. But we did get some good feedback on the fourth meeting and right now the administrative teams of the three districts are getting together to talk about how we can incorporate some of the feedback, which was essentially was interesting because we had settled on the senior star as a kind of guidepost for that portrait of a graduate. And the feedback we got was maybe that sounded good at that third meeting, but by the fourth meeting, when people actually saw what we had put out there. That that didn't feel like it captured the real essence or spirit of what we had discussed during the portrait of a graduate meetings. So we're looking to adjust the graphic a little bit and we're taking the feedback on some of the wording and verbiage. And we are going to find a way to bring that committee back, hopefully in an informal way onsite and also like, you know, digitally online to let them have some more opportunities for feedback. Before we bring it to our boards for approval. So this would be a separate approval process for all three boards. Hopefully everyone will be on board with it. I think we got some really great feedback about what we were, it was kind of a great iterative process because one of the things that came out was how much we wanted our kids to engage in authentic conversation and discourse and be able to bring up topics that were maybe controversial and uncomfortable and express their opinions and accept other people's opinions. That's exactly what happened during the process. And I think a lot of us walked away feeling like maybe you don't have the exact answer of what the portrait looks like yet, but the process was really engaging and exciting. And a way for our communities to come together around something that's really, I think, going to be impactful for us in terms of North Star and how we move forward, planning together for curriculum and instruction and all sorts of things in our three districts. So I wish I had the final thing today, but I don't. But I still think it was a great process and more to come on that.
Did, did, maybe I missed it. Did you say, did you have a timeline, an estimated?
We're getting together like this week, as in I think tomorrow to kind of, we've already talked about what we think could be our next steps. We're working with that facilitator and their design team. And we also had really interestingly a portrait design team member that sketched entire draft of what they thought would be appropriate. And it actually has some really amazing ideas in it. So thank you for bringing that idea, whoever it was. I don't know who it was, but it's pretty amazing. And yeah, I don't know if it was, yeah, but it was great. And so we're thinking, I mean, we want it wrapped up by the end of this year if possible. So hopefully in June I'll have something to show you.
I know a couple of board members were able to participate. I don't know if anybody in the spot of Amy or Tim or if you want to share anything about experience.
No, I, I, I thought it was wonderful. I was a bit skeptical going into it. I didn't know what to expect. And even after the first meeting, I wasn't sure, but the last few meetings and just having the opportunity to interact with people you wouldn't normally get to interact with, I thought was, was great. And it was, it was really wonderful to hear from students and just have so many people in a room excited about the future of our, our community's children. So I, I thought it was an incredibly rewarding experience that just itself. And I'm excited to see the final product.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, there wasn't a meeting that I walked away from that I didn't feel like I really took some good stuff away from in the way. When we did the breakout groups, the groups that were put together were fantastic because it was a mix of everybody. Can't imagine how long that took. And all the work that went into it, but it worked and things that, that we had never, I mean, it was just a conversation about everything that we possibly could have dug up. So I think it was really productive. And of course, like to see the end product will be fantastic. And I mean, again, so much work going into it to be able to come up with that. But I think all the ideas and the work behind it is there. We just need to put it into motion.
I was just going to say, I thought walking away, it was very inspirational every single time and kind of was wishing that it wasn't like an end to it. It was something that we can continue to do, kind of like a continuum of like local, just collaboration for school. Not that everyone's enthusiastic about it, but I also thought that our students and I was at the table with Lake Bluff students. Yeah, they were all Lake Bluff actually, because even if they were in the high school and they were pretty much exactly what I would want the portrait of our graduate to be. So I think we're already on the right track.
I agree. And our staff were highlighted. Our students were incredible. I mean, and I don't want to take anything away from Lake Forest students. They were as well, but just for us as a community to know that the work that, that your previous leadership teams and boards have been doing, I mean, we've really, we have some really amazing students out there that have gone through an incredible system. And so I think that's something for this board and community to be really proud of. The other thing that I do want to highlight is, as we talked about, our administrative staff is lean. This partnership between the three districts, I mean, I have to thank district 67 and 115 for their amazing efforts in terms of communication and organization. Their communication department has done the bulk of that logistical work. And although we have split the costs evenly between the three districts, there's been a lot of work that's been done on the Lake Forest side because they have different staff structure and they've been more than willing to do that for us and write communication and support with those kinds of things. And I just think we're really building a good foundation of articulation and collaboration in these, these three districts, which I'm really, really proud of and excited for the future of.
That's great.
All right. And item D, we'll keep with you, Dr. Lee Alley for a review of the press pack.
You're going to get sick of me at some point. So press, we had an enormous packet to go through, press packet 108. It is listed in your, the entire thing is in your board packet. I'm going to bring your attention to a few items that the board policy committee, which consists of Carrie Steinbach and Hill and Tim Pennett. We all went through the incredibly huge packet. And there were three particular questions that we had to answer based on press and the options that we had within the press plus process. So one was policy seven colon 109 that had to do with cell phone usage. And there was a question in there about whether or not we require cell phones to be kept out of sight. And while that seems like a very easy question to answer, we actually had a lot of discussion about that. We brought in Mr. Blackmer. I also talked with Principal Bay about what our current policies are, what are some of the things that are happening with cell phones in our buildings? And there was a large discussion about this at a previous board meeting where there was some concern expressed that students really needed access to their phones all day long. And to be honest, that is really not something that's recommended from a law enforcement standpoint at all. If we're talking about safety and security, quite frankly, if there is an emergency, we need students to not be looking at their cell phones or texting their parents. They need to be listening to the front, the first responders that are on the scene and their teachers and administrators. And so from a safety and security standpoint, out of sight is actually best, not only for emergencies, but also we've had issues of students texting their parents when they don't feel good, not going through the office. And then all of a sudden we have parents showing up saying, I'm picking up so and so, you know, they told me that they're not feeling well. And then the front office has no idea, has not had an opportunity to talk to the student or provide any onsite support. And then outside of the, the security and health standpoint, we, we, we've also found them to be an increasing disruption to, to instruction. Students have been through a time period, my own children included, where they have been able to have their phones and devices with them all the time, even during school time, you know? And kids are really kind of attached to them right now and having trouble breaking up with their phones. And so what we, we felt as a policy committee, we would like to have them kept, be kept out of sight and default to the press policy of cell phones being required to be kept out of sight. So please take a look at that. This is a first read. I'd like you to pay attention to that policy seven colon 109. There is also another policy in there that we had a question to answer, which was seven colon 160 about student appearance. And we, there is a requirement, the laws requirement at this point regarding race, ethnicity or hair texture. And we, we, as a board policy committee voted to expand upon the laws requirement by adding the sentence, the district does not prohibit hairstyles or hair textures historically associated with historically or historically associated with race, ethnicity, or any other protected classes under board policy seven colon 10, equal educational opportunities, including but not limited to protected hairstyles such as braids, locks and twists. And so we basically voted to expand upon the law saying that we are not going to be stopping a student from wearing a hairstyle that would be affiliated or associated with a protected class. So that's again, board policy seven colon 160.
Can I, can I make a comment there though? Only based on arguments that I've heard historically, not on that policy specifically, but policy in general. Is that sometimes it's better to write it more generally, like we wouldn't restrict any hairstyle, period.
Right.
Colon full stop, you know, full stop. Because when you tend to try to list all these things, inevitably you forget something or you leave, something new happens that you didn't anticipate. So I've heard that consideration given in the past, that it's not always a wide, the best road to go down and be so specific.
And the, and for clarification, because that's a great point, the part that we're adding is the, or any other protected classes. So it really, that's the part we voted to add in. So the original, the law requirement has the more specific language and we voted to expand that to a more broad. And I think that's why we talked about that.
Yeah, right. Go ahead. We said we didn't want to be so specific because.
It's a great point.
Inclusive of everybody.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. And then there were two board policies at question in six colon 60, which is a very, very large policy addressing all sorts of curricular content. But these two in particular had to do with one, anti-bias education and intergroup conflict resolution. And so we did want to incorporate the fact that we already provide anti-bias education and intergroup conflict resolution. And so we are going to be making sure that that's indicated in our board policy because that's something we already do through our social emotional learning program and have done for some time. And then the other piece of this, hold on, I'm going back and forth between two notes. It has to do with sex education and we had five choices of what we could indicate. And we decided to come forward with the wording, the board either does not offer national sex education standards referred to as NSES or offers NSES, but does not want to communicate that in this policy. But the board does offer developmentally appropriate consent education curriculum and wants to communicate that in the policy. The superintendent shall implement a comprehensive health education program in accordance with state law, including a developmentally appropriate consent education curriculum pursuant to the school code. So essentially what our, and please interject board policy committee, but our conversation had to do with if we aligned ourselves with the law that would give us more flexibility to address legal implications as they came down, as opposed to indicating now what we plan to do regardless of what the law is telling us to do. So that was the conversation. Another thing to take a look at is that we will press policy, this packet introduced an additional five colon 125, which is the acceptable use policy. It was a newly adopted or a newly proposed acceptable use policy. We did consult with our attorneys because as you may or may not remember, but we did an extensive review of the five colon 125 policy last year and aligned ourselves with a stricter policy. And our attorneys feel comfortable that we would, they, they feel it's a good idea to stick with the policy that we had already adopted last year instead of the new press policy, which they feel doesn't address as many issues as we had in our current policy. Is there anything that I'm missing?
I would just add, no, that was all wonderful. Thank you. I would just add that we did try as much as possible to stick to the press policy updates. And only veered from those when we felt it was really, really necessary, acceptable use being one of those. And then of course our, what's our other one?
Community use of facilities. Yes. We also did have a discussion and this is ongoing with the community use of facilities. In our last meeting, as you recall, we did have a conversation about whether that needed to be revisited in terms of commercial use. And so our attorneys have gathered some sample policies. Other districts have done some work on this. And so press packet 109 has just been issued as of yesterday. And so we have more work to do, but we will bring the custom policies from other districts and community use specifically concerning commercial use to the board policy committee and hopefully have something to be approved with packet 109.
It's a great update. And thanks for, uh, it's all of you on the work on policy. That's a lot of work. Any comments, questions? Okay, great. Okay. So we're going to move on to item.
Actually, just a thought, either after the fact, before we vote on these things or the next time you do an update, like there's things you want to draw attention to. I, I would find it helpful if there was like, we got a note ahead of time where you summarized, I think it was four, four kind of key things you really wanted us to pay attention to. That might be helpful going forward.
Thanks, Mark.
I was thinking that as I was saying it and I was looking at people's faces and going, I should have written a memo. Yes.
I do agree. That's helpful because the three of us have read this a lot, right? But if you haven't, then it.
I'll include a memo with the next approval too, just.
Thanks.
And actually I might just reiterate it in our Friday update as well, to draw your attention to those things.
All right. Item E is extended school year, summer school staffing updates. Ms. Tommy Erins or Tracy?
She isn't able to be here tonight. So Tracy's going to give us a brief update and then Tommy will have a memo and be here in person at the next meeting.
Well, and I just need to start by saying that Tommy is teacher by day, principal by night. And so she has been spending many hours helping us staff summer school and extended school year. We've had a number of positions to hire for, and the exciting news is we are just about there. So she's in the process of hiring our last two staff members that we need. So by the next board meeting, she will be attending and presenting that finalized staffing plan. So we have about 23 staff currently hired and ready to go. We have two more teaching assistants that we do need to hire for our extended school year supports. We have about 11 general education teachers, three learning behavior specialists, and then speech, language pathologists, social workers, a nurse, a secretary to help and in the front office and some, as I said, some teaching assistants to support students, mostly in the extended school year. Classes, but also we have some students who access summer school who by virtue of their 504 plan or IEP still have the rights to some of those accommodations and modifications during that time. So you will receive a memo before the next meeting outlining the staffing plan along with any budgetary needs. And then Tommy will be presenting that at the next board meeting for your approval. Any questions?
Do the people, the, the hires, are they mostly from our existing teachers? Are they people from outside the area coming to work here?
We actually have a pretty good mix. I would say about, probably about two thirds are our own staff members and about a third are outside hires. So we had a number of staff members to hire, but we did get a good number of our own teachers, teaching assistants and specialists to work this summer. Thank you.
And finally, in the section, item F tentative budget for fiscal year 2022, 23, Mr. Jay Con.
I'm actually going to be doing that next meeting. So we're, I was not, did not finish the tentative budget yet.
Then this will be the fastest you've ever.
I had a 45 minute presentation. I was all ready to go.
All right.
I asked him to increase to an hour and do it next time.
Okay.
You actually didn't have your walk on music.
Thank you. That's great.
And we'll present it at the May meeting and then it'll get a good approval.
We'll look, we'll look forward to that. Excellent. So we're going to move on to section eight. This is our approval with discussion items. First one is Tracy backup for the district consolidated plan.
Right. So the district consolidated plan is completed annually. And it requires board approval in order, in order for it to be submitted to the state. and it requires board approval in order, in order for it to be submitted to the state. All right, so the district consolidated plan is designed to streamline federal grant applications and management into one process. The aim is to reduce the paperwork burden on grantees by eliminating repetition in the information provided and to support a more holistic approach to funding for student needs. It's important to note that each of the grants have specific rules for the use of their funds. Title one funds must be spent as targeted assistance for students identified as being at risk for failure. Title requires that funds be spent on supplemental programming, and we cannot use them to supplant any of our curriculum or interventions or pieces that we need. IDEA funds must be spent on the identification of students with special needs, as well as helping us to provide a free and appropriate public education. Five percent of IDEA funds must be spent on professional development to meet the unique needs of students with learning differences. And so I've listed up here the multiple grants that are part of the district consolidated plan and what each of those grants provides us funds for. At the bottom, you'll see we did receive some COVID-related grants over the past few years. And the IDEA American Rescue Plan funds, those will be used this year. Our S R funds were over the past two years, and we, we shouldn't be receiving any new funds, we don't believe. Correct, Jay?
Correct. We have not been reimbursed for all of our expenses yet, but we are not getting any more.
Any new S R funds, unless we have any carryover that we did not spend. All right, so here's part of the funding that we have. So our use of funds for this coming year for title one, we are receiving thirty-three thousand dollars. Title two is just over thirteen thousand dollars. Title four is ten thousand dollars. It remains ten thousand dollars each and every year. We have not received our allocations for IDEA funds, so for our Part B funds and for our preschool funds. We did receive some American Rescue Plan funds for IDEA and for forty-two thousand dollars, combined both IDEA flow-through and preschool funds. And then if we do have any S R funds, it would be any carryover that we haven't spent, but there are no, no new funds attached there. All right, so in terms of the title grants, what we planned, what we do in order to determine our funding priorities is we use a great deal of stakeholder feedback. We don't have any specific meeting with groups of people, but we use the surveys that we have either staff or parents fill out throughout the year. We use our MTSS or multi, multi-tiered systems of support committees and subcommittees who gather information and feedback through their work. We get feedback from our student services team, our five essential survey, and our human X surveys, as well as our bilingual parent advisory committee. We gather all of that feedback along with knowing and understanding our own district initiatives, state and federal requirements in order to determine what we will be using our funds for. So over the next year, we would continue to purchase interventions for our multi-tiered systems of support. This is ongoing. Year after year, we some, sometimes use funds for subscriptions. So every year we need to repurchase that subscription, that online intervention. We also have some products that have some consumables for our interventions, but we also use our MTSS committee work to determine if we either need to replace any reading or math interventions, or if we require new interventions. So in this coming year, some of the work will be specifically designed for looking at updated writing interventions. We also have a goal of taking a closer look at our multilingual programming and providing professional development for not only our multilingual teachers, but all of our staff members that work in our buildings. We'll be purchasing MTSS tracking software, as well as a potentially a new progress monitoring tool to be able to monitor how students are performing within our interventions. We're currently looking at a new SEL screener to help us with identifying students who might need more support. And then we also have a set aside amount of money for students under McKinney-Vento who are considered homeless in any identified need that they might have. And then through our IDEA grants, much of our spending revolves around our child find activities. So how do I, we reach out, identify, and assess students who we suspect might have a disability. We have our True North membership that we pair membership dues, as well as that profession, that five percent professional development cost goes to True North for, for their professional development activities. We often use our grant to pay for tuition for some of our outplace students. We will this year have any student services team member who has not been trained in the use of facilitated IEP, trained in that process. We found that that has been a very beneficial process in helping families feel more included in the IEP process. And so all of our staff will have that training. And then we have summer work opportunities for professional development as well. And then the last piece for the IDEA grant is our TA for the pre-K classroom. New for this year, we have not set aside funds for coordinated early intervention services in the past. But if you recall, a few meetings back, I spoke about how we had received the report that we had some disproportionality in identifying students who are English language learners in need of special education services. And so part of what came out of that is that we will need to designate some funds for some early intervention services for students who are identified as EL and helping them at the younger years with their instruction.
Any questions?
As a former grant manager, there is a lot that goes into writing these grants. And I just want to thank Tracy and Jay for the amount of work, because it's not a tremendous amount of money in terms of how much it impacts our budget.
It's about three percent of our total budget.
But the.
Don't lose it, but it's a lot of work for.
It's a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate the collaborations with the stakeholders to try to make a plan that makes sense. We certainly don't want to lose the money, but it's, it's a lot of work to not only manage the grant and write it, but then manage it all the way through and provide expenditure reports and report periodic reports on how we're doing in those areas too. It's goal setting. I mean, it's a lot, so.
And then once this is approved, and I, we submit and have this approved by the state, then we actually write the grants. So this actually isn't the part where we actually write the grants yet, so this is just step one.
Any other questions?
Well, we're approving the plan, right? Why would we not? Outside the box, you're like.
Who have a formality.
The formality, but I want to make sure you're, I mean, you're putting your name on it, that the board approves the district writing the plan and the activities based in the grant. That they're appropriate, and you feel like they're necessary based on the input that we've gotten, but.
I thought maybe I was missing something.
So given that, may I have a motion to approve the district consolidated plan as presented by the administration?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion passes. Thank you. Item B is Olson Transportation. Mr. Jay Khan is presented by, actually, I'll wait. Is there anything else to add?
The grant.
Grant money extended?
I think we need to do roll calls.
It's just, it's just the plan.
Yeah, but it involves receiving money, right? I think it's just the plan for how to meet the needs of students.
I, I'm comfortable with it the way, the way it is, but at some point, we draw the line. All right. Item B, Olson Transportation. Mr. Jay Khan, anything to add that wasn't?
I've alluded to this, I think I mentioned it earlier this year, that I was expecting a large increase. And then when I got the large increase, I went back and tried to negotiate it and it was not successful. I just wouldn't, I refused to accept the large increase, but at this point, I have no other choice.
It's lower than some other districts, right?
Yeah, there have been, I've heard crazy numbers higher than that. So I think that it's pretty much in line with where the market is. It's very difficult to find drivers. They're competing for talent. Costs are just going up. And so what we have, what we did discuss was that we were going to meet jointly with Lake Forest and the bus company to look at our routes and see if we can make them more efficient and hopefully save some costs that way. But otherwise, they've been a pretty good partner. We've had, been with them for a long time. And that is a terrible, terrible bidding environment. Don't see benefit of going out and looking for another company.
I did want to also, I received a question from a board member about, we had talked briefly a little while ago about possibly adjusting our start times to help us with costs. And Jay's done a lot of work on investigating if that's a possibility with the current districts that we share buses with. And at this point, we are not finding a solution there. So we'll keep investigating that option, but it's not looking good.
I have one question. The kindergarten routes? So any kindergartner gets charged extra?
No, they call them the kindergarten routes, but it's really the midday, they're actually pre-K routes, so the dedicated pre-K routes.
Any other questions? All right, this one we will roll call vote. So the board tonight is being asked to approve a one-year contract extension with Olson Transportation at a rate increase of thirteen point four percent for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. May I have a motion to approve the contract as presented by administration?
Second.
All right, Carrie, can we have a roll call vote?
Sure. Carrie Steinbach, yes. Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Anne Hill?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
And Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Great, motion passes. Item C is the regional office of education permit for the Lake Bluff Elementary School playground renovation.
Oh, there it is. So you've already approved the act, the plan for the playground in order, actually, as Nicole can tell you, we need an ROE permit when we do, do any work that's over fifty thousand dollars. So I realized earlier, a couple of weeks ago, that, oh, I didn't get the ROE permit yet. And so this is the approval of the, to submit the permit, the approval of the plans. I need the board to sign off on it when I send it in. So it's getting the, the permit from the regional office for the work that we'll be doing in June.
Awesome. Okay.
Okay.
Any questions, comments? I think we should do a roll call vote on this one too. So may I have a motion to approve the regional office of education permit for the LBS playground renovation as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Carrie, can we have another roll call vote, please?
Sure. Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Anne Hill?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach?
Yes.
Great, that passes as well. Item D is annual business approvals. This item is related to the annual approvals of authorized depositories in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three hazardous route resolution. We can take each of these separately. So with the authorized depositories, any discussion we need to have?
So according to board policy, the board should approve the, the depositories annually. I've listed out all of the places where we have our money and the year when we establish those accounts. I'm actually proposing to add a, an additional one this year. Fifth third capital markets, we have a lot of cash sitting in our account. And actually, we, when we get our tax money early, and interest rates have been very low for a long time, but there's some opportunities now. There's an inverted yield curve, and there's some good rates that are out there in terms of treasuries. So I'm thinking of looking at fifth third to increase the length of some of our investments for the reserves that we don't plan to spend while maintaining liquidity and preservation of capital. So there's just some opportunities to invest out in a little bit longer term in a laddered way so that the money comes due when we need it, but that we get a higher return on, on the cash that we have. So I'll be talking to them next week, but wanted to have the approval in case we do see some opportunities to invest there.
I had a question. I remember a number of years ago that we, you, you had changed, maybe it was when you first came here. We had, we had, instead of five accounts at Lake Forest Bank and Trust, they were all over the place. And we, we made a point to say, I think it was beneficial to have them at the same place. Does, does Lake Forest Bank Trust not offer like a capital markets account type of thing? Or is it not something that, that same argument doesn't apply anymore, or what do you think?
I think it's really more, I don't know that they're in the securities business. They may have a branch of that, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with who.
It's not their wheelhouse.
Yeah, yeah, they're more, they're more in, not commercial, but they do a lot of small businesses and government banking. And really, we have, up to this point, had all our money in PMA. And they just, because so many districts have their money in there, there's not as many. They have trouble finding investments, especially the way the market has been lately. So I'm not, I'm not confident that I'm getting the best rate, like I think other school districts are maybe getting, are higher in the pecking order, and they just don't have enough to go around.
Because they're bigger.
So there's just opportunities, especially now to, for still liquid and safe investments that are in here. And I just, I haven't been able to fill all of my needs with PMA, so.
Thanks. Any other questions, comments? Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the list of current authorized depositories as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Let's do a roll call vote on this too, please.
Okay, Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue?
Yes.
Andy Duran?
Yes.
Anne Hill?
Yes.
Mark Berry?
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach, yes, and Tim Pennage, yes.
Okay, motion passed. All right.
As easy as it looks, huh?
You're a premonition.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Next one is hazardous routes. This remains unchanged from the prior year, but anything to add to this administration?
As of today, it was announced that we believe there will be a pedestrian walkway south of Arden Shores North subdivision. Is that what I'm?
Tangley Oaks, I think, right?
It's north of.
Arbor, Arbor Woods.
So between Arbor and Tangley? The bridge over the railroad that's north of, north of Arbor Woods.
So one of our parents had reached out to Julie Morrison's office and suggested, you know, just made, made her aware that there was not a very safe passage.
Over the railroad tracks? Not over Green Bay?
Oh, well, the Green Bay, the railroad tracks bisects Green Bay. It goes under Green Bay.
Oh.
Between North Chicago and just at the border.
No, that's okay. No, so it, the proposed project probably wouldn't be done until about twenty twenty-four. But it's, the village has received monies to make this happen to the extent of like one point two five million dollars. And the engineer is working on some plans right now. And we're just really happy that we will hopefully be reducing our hazardous routes for students. Obviously, one of our goals is for all of our students to have a safe way to walk or bike to school. And this will help with that. So in a couple of years, we'll be presenting a different list.
It's good news. Just a sidebar question, given the experience that you guys may not remember, we, we are partial owners of a traffic light on the other side of town. They're not going to ask us to be involved in the ownership and maintenance of that.
We are currently.
Oh, you mean of the bridge?
Yeah.
No. Because we do have to do some of that.
We are currently. We're a stoplight in the.
All right, then, with no other questions, may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three hazardous route resolution, which is unchanged from the prior year as presented by administration?
So moved.
Second.
Great. And do we need a roll call vote on the annual approvals?
Should it involve spending money?
This one doesn't, right? So, all right, so let's just do a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes as well. Thank you. All right, moving on to section nine of the agenda is our second opportunity for public comment. Not seeing anybody else in the room. Amy, anybody on Zoom?
No.
And any written, any additional written comments?
No more.
Okay, great. Then we will move on to adjournment. So may I have a motion to adjourn the May tenth, twenty twenty-two regular Board of Education meeting at eight twenty-nine PM?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Need to adjourn.